Good afternoon. Thanks for being here. I'm going to call this meeting of the March 4th, 2020 Reno City Council. I'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Today, we have some guests, special guests here today from the Dean's Future Scholars Program, and I'd like Mari Luz Garcia to lead us in the pledge.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vice Mayor, your first item on your agenda today is roll call for the Reno City Council. Breckus, Doer, Delgado, Weber, Jordan, Reese, Chivi.
Here.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council. The next item on our agenda today is general public comment. These items are reserved for items not pertaining to a specific agenda item. First to speak is William Rogers. As a reminder to all of our public commenters, your time is reserved at three minutes. We ask that you address the council as a whole. Please be respectful while you're in this room. Any clapping, stomping, or disruptive behavior, you may be issued a warning. Continued behavior of that like you may be asked to leave the chambers. At this time, William Rogers, come on up.
Thank you, Council, for your time this afternoon. I bring to your attention and come to you for more of an explanation more than anything else. Recently, about a week and a half ago, there was a breakfast held over at the Silver Dollar Inn for the residents of 541 West Third Street apartment complex. Over there, you may have been aware that the Reno Housing Authority put this breakfast on. During that breakfast, the people and those tenants were informed of an eviction that will be coming their way. The property was purchased by Jacobs Entertainment. I'd like them to continue their improvement of that property. The property at that time, I believe, is owned by the Reno Housing Authority at this time. This property, and the reason I come to you is a couple of questions. One, this property was purchased in about 1992 through a trust deed for about $10. And I do have the paperwork, and some of you have been provided that paperwork, Ms. Jordan, for your area there, affects you. Was purchased for $10, and that property value at that time was about 1.6 million. The Reno Housing Authority has maintained that property, though it is old and rundown, but it has maintained and has provided a stable income for low-income housing people there. The average rent is about $500. The Reno Housing Authority's mission statement, and I really like to provide that to the council here, reads as follows: "The mission of the Housing Authority is to provide fair, substantial quality housing in diverse neighborhoods throughout Reno Sparks and Washoe County, and offers a stable foundation of low-income families to pursue economic opportunities, become more self-fishing, improve their quality of life. In doing so, the Reno Housing Authority will continue to cultivate strong community partnership, promote fiscal responsibility, and administer all its programs and activities in an effective, ethical, and professional manner." Currently, with the facing of the homeless shortage right now, and what we face right now, that we have very little to none at all, and the waiting list right now for tenants to get on is one to two years. During this breakfast, the team members, those members and those tenants there were only provided economic opportunity to reach out to the community for services that are already overworked and not there. And so, these people have been no notice of when they will be leaving. So, my question to the council is this: What is the proceeds going to? They helped in those areas there, in that housing there, and what is going to be done to address that with no notice and be put on notice that I have no place, they have no place to go, but we're putting them on notice there? Thank you for your time.
Mr. Acting Mayor, I rarely comment on public comment, but I think this is the second time that this issue has come up, and I will inform the Speaker that I believe if this is the sarahs in arms, that it is in Ward 1, which I represent. And after our Speaker last week came forward, I reached out to the Executive Director of the Reno Housing Authority to talk to her about this, and she said she's out of town this week. But honestly, and this is a quote from an email from her, "Honestly, at this time, we are still in discussions regarding the sarahs in arms, and I would not be unable to provide specifics because a decision has not been made. They're a public body. Their meetings are publicly noticed." I have not reviewed that record, but the Executive Director on Saturday, the 29th of last month, said that it is still an in-process discussion, whatever that means, and I'm going to be following up with her next week when she gets back into town. I did not know about a breakfast or anything that they held, but thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, Councilman Breckus. If there is something that I can do to assist you in getting to the bottom of it, please let me know. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Vice Mayor, our next public comment is from Tammy Holt Still, followed by Sam Diney, followed by Craig Smyers.
Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. I am back to finish what my discussion was earlier this morning. As to, three different times now, I have been before you discussing different things about Lemon Valley. First was that, and it was proven in the court of law, that the city of Reno was using Swan Lake as a way to protect Silver Lake. And that was proven in a court of law. You guys lost. We won, meaning the residents that sued you for the flooding of their homes. Number two was, I kept saying, "You are out of sewer facility." And then, oh by golly, by December of 2018, all of a sudden, you guys are having to vote to do your special process for allocations of the sewer plant. Now, I brought back showing you that Class C effluent is discharged into Swan Lake. And you were told, hmm, maybe a little. But I've shown you where it's more than just a little, and a little is even too much. When the federal law or the feds are pollution, dilution of pollution is still pollution, meaning you put Class A and Class C together, it's still Class C. I don't know what it's going to take, except for to keep putting it on the record, for the citizens to come back again to have to sue, because this is going to happen again. Nothing you have done is going to fix the flooding situation out there in the North Valleys. We will flood again, especially after the HESCO barriers go down. It will happen again. And with everything being put on the record, they're going to have every leg to stand on, and the city of Reno is going to have none. This is costing too much money, not only for the citizens, but the environment, the citizens that were injured, your taxpayers. This is costing too much money to sit there and throw Band-Aids at this instead of looking at what really needs to be done. I do have more information that I am not going to deliver right now, but I have been working very hard on this. And I think it's time for the city of Reno Council quit with the idea of, we have to have development to fix what developments already made a mess of. I stated that to Rosen, because I was told I was against development, and I said, "No, I'm against development that damages people. I'm against development that is not done properly. It has not been done properly in the North Valleys. It is affecting everybody. It affects every citizen in Washoe County with what you're doing. It is time to change your processes. It's time to get your head out of the sand, start looking at everything your staff has to say, and then ask yourself, am I only getting half the truth? Do I need to look further?" And quit listening to what the developers have to say because you're in their pockets.
Mr. Vice Mayor, our next public comment is from Sam Diney, followed by Craig Smyers.
Overhead, please. Sam Diney, that's me, the guard angel for Reno. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I've spent many years flying fighters and bombers, and those are some of the airplanes I used to fly, the F-4 Phantom, the F-101 Voodoo, the B-52 bomber, biggest bomber in the history of the world. I carried enough bombs strapped between my legs, and I likely have an audience here. Thank you for coming, young men. I used to carry enough bombs strapped between my legs to kill 93 million people. Thank God, I never had to drop any. And then, later on, I became a pilot for the greatest airline in all of history, Pan American World Airlines, and they were blown out of business by the terrorists over Lockerbie with no help, zero no help, from our own American government. What about that? Any rate, I was just finishing my workout a little while ago and driving along, saying, "What am I going to do with the rest of the day?" Wow, I drive my city home, and they're having a nice smiley face. They're having a special meeting just to make my day, so I can have something to do in the afternoon. Yes, that's true. Anyway, seriously speaking, here's the deal. About three months ago, the governor and his entourage of federal bureaucrats put out a plea to the city council to support them in bringing a military unit, another military unit, to the Reno area. I got up here, and I was responsible for bringing the C-130 here instead of F-16 noisy fighters, dangerous fighters. I was responsible for bringing the C-130, and they're doing a great job, the Air National Guard. The governor and his entourage said that these airplanes that were coming here, if there are any new airplanes, was going to be for a rescue issue. Well, here's the problem. Here's the problem. If anybody has had their ears open for the last month, there have been fighter jets taken off, noisy, dangerous fighter planes, taken off from our airport virtually every morning and flying around our city. I'm here warning you. Maybe you don't even know about it. If you don't, you better not know about it, because you should be doing something about it. Twenty years ago, we spent $200 million redoing houses to make them soundproof against noisy airplanes, and the airliners had to spend hundreds of millions of dollars themselves quieting their engines down. Now, you're sitting here idly, and it may not happen thanks to me, and they may decide, "We're not going to do that." We do not. And I support the military. I recognize the military. Nobody recognizes and supports the military more than I do. Nobody. So, I'm not against the military. I'm against the military having fighter jets flying out of the middle of Reno, Nevada. Do you understand what I'm saying? She's reading the newspaper over there. Jordan, what's the story? See, this is what we get from our government here. A person comes down here with important stuff, and the young lady, thank you, the young lady's reading something else, because what I'm saying, what I'm saying is probably 10 times more important than what she just said. Through the, I was talking through you to her.
Please remember, Mr. Diney, please remember to address the body as a whole. Please don't address an individual council member.
Okay. Can I have my 10 minutes back so she can go ahead?
You can have an additional 10 seconds.
No, now you see what happens. You're welcome.
Mr. Vice Mayor, our next public comment is from Craig Smyers.
It's common knowledge that last December, the U.S. Supreme Court upheld the Ninth District Court's decision establishing the right to camp when there are not enough shelter beds. After the Supreme Court's decision, you have cleared two camps in violation of the rights of our citizens. In January, I was nauseated as I watched a front-end loader bucket dump hundreds of pounds of blankets and sleeping bags into a dump truck. Days later, temperatures plummeted, and it snowed. An administrator and psychologist at the Nevada State Mental Health Hospital told me that many more homeless people die of exposure than are reported in the local press. The Reno Gazette-Journal today reported that 130 people were evicted from their camps. Sleeping rough without shelter is a health hazard. You shouldn't need a court decision to tell you that harassing people who are homeless and leaving them to suffer and die is wrong. Most of the population of Reno is at risk of homelessness. You ought to help reestablish these camps. Many of these people are disabled and need to be near downtown services. I hope that a legal advocacy group sues the setting.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we have no further general public comments signed in at this time.
I'd like to make some public comments.
Ms. Breckus, I'll let you make your comments in the reports towards the end. There are a spot for each council member to make those comments. And I'm sorry, did you say there were no additional public comments?
No additional public comment. We'll be transitioning to approval of the agenda, in which I'll turn it over to the manager if she has any changes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do have one change, and that is to remove Item B as in point five from the agenda. That's all the changes I have. Thank you.
Okay. With that change, can I get a motion, please?
No, I need to pull, oh, to the agenda, yes.
Over to you.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion by Councilmember Delgado, a second by Councilmember Jordan. In the absence of further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, next item is the consent agenda, of which I have public comment. General practice is for council to take this prior to polling items. So, first to speak for consent is Mary Luz Garcia, followed by Siona Lovaka.
Hello, everyone. I read a quote the other day, and I wanted to share it. It said, "Schools are the evidence of a health in the community." This stood out to me, and I agree that if we want to have a healthy community, we must stay engaged with our educational system, and we must find ways to improve opportunity and access for our students from all backgrounds. When I came on board as the Director of the Dean's Future Scholars Program seven years ago, I started to look for community leaders and educators who reflected the students that I served. I reached out to Councilman Delgado and asked him to come speak to 250 students. And before he knew it, he had a bunch of little middle schoolers surrounding him, challenging him to a game of basketball outside. And even though he was extremely intimidated, he did come back for some more DFS events, and he's been in our corner ever since. The crowdfunding effort that we recently launched online is to support the DFS summer program. Every summer, our students come to the university campus for six to eight weeks. Our middle schoolers focus on building relationships and just getting exposed to the college campus. Our high school students get ahead by taking Washoe County School District classes and jump-start classes from TMC. And the last bit of funding that we're trying to raise provides two free college classes to UNR and a paid internship on the university campus. Even though we are a soft-funded program, everything is provided to our students for free. We bus them, we feed them, we educate them, and we even help them gain those necessary employability skills that are so important. It is our hope that you consider supporting today's agenda item to donate to the Dean's Future Scholars Program. Your support would mean the world to us, because this is a big year for DFS. We just turned 20. Our homegrown grassroots efforts started with 50 low-income first-generation college students, and today, fast forward, we have served 1,357. In all of the research that I've done over the years, I have yet to find another academic outreach program anywhere in the nation that starts working with students in the sixth grade and continues supporting them through college completion. Based on our longitudinal data, we know that this program works, and we've seen how it impacts entire families and neighborhoods. DFS is unique. It is a big family, and we believe that there's no timestamp or expiration date when mentoring should stop. My guess is that you all believe in the power of mentoring, and we know that it can take many shapes. I know that Councilman Delgado often carves out time out of his schedule to meet with my DFS alumni. He helps them find internships, employment. He talks about networking and how to get involved. He even made some phone calls at the beginning of the school year to help with a DFS alumni who is DACA, and he wasn't able to get a state license for school counseling. All of these small mentoring moments end up making a huge difference. Siona Lovaka is a product of the Washoe County School District and the College of Education. I feel super old saying this, but I've known this guy right here for 16 years. Going back to the notion of healthy communities, I believe his story is something that the entire community should be proud of. He embodies the concept of social mobility, giving back, diverse representation, and the positive ripple effect that DFS is having in our community. So, thank you so much for all that you do, and thank you for giving us this time today.
City Council, Malo Lele. The DFS program has over 600 amazing alumnis with unique stories and inspirational journeys. Unfortunately, they were all busy today, so you have to hear from me. My name is Siona Lovaka. I am a first-generation American, as well as a first-generation college graduate. My mother and father both come from the Pacific Islands of Tonga. My mom is one of seven, and her education stopped after the third grade. My father is one of 11 and had no type of education. So, education was always emphasized to me since I was really young, which is the reason why the Dean's Future Scholars Program has been heaven-sent. When I was in the sixth grade, I was recommended to join the Dean's Future Scholars Program. The format is simple. During the year, they have mentoring. During the summer, they provide the summer program at the university. When I was in the sixth grade, my mother was no longer able to help me academically, but the DFS program provided free tutoring. Like many of my peers at Title I schools, I was behind academically, but the DFS program provided free classes, so I was able to catch up and get ahead. Where most of my cousins got in trouble with the law, I was able to avoid it, because unlike them, since the sixth grade, instead of running the streets, I was running around the UNR campus, a part of this program, partaking in their free classes, their free tutoring, their free mentoring, also their free food. Me, personally, I'm grateful for this program. I'm grateful for the sense of belonging that it really instilled in me. I always say, since the sixth grade, they indoctrinated us and made us believe we can graduate from college, which we eventually did. Like Mari Luz said, I know she may look younger than me, but she was my mentor when I was in high school, and I'm very grateful for the relationship that we continue to have. I look to her for guidance, and I still look to her for leadership. I don't believe education guarantees success, but I do believe education guarantees an opportunity, and that's what the Dean's Future Scholars Program did for me. It gave me an opportunity. Today, I am the first in the Tonga community and the first in my family consists of hundreds, and I literally mean hundreds of cousins, to get a master's degree. I currently work as an academic advisor, and I'm glad with the tools that the DFS program provides to me. I use these tools to help others reach their educational goals. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, everything was said beautifully. I don't even want to say anything more. If there's an opportunity, if we can, I'd love to have a picture with some of the DFS members that are here, their faculty up front. If you guys don't mind with some of us, it's a special opportunity, too.
Yeah, happy to do it. Ms. Garcia, as you're heading out, please include me in your future asks in terms of visiting with your students. Love to spend time on the campus, and certainly with your students especially. So, happy to do that in the future, and we'll talk offline about that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, no further public comment on consent. I'll send it back to you and council for any items they'd like to discuss.
Okay. I'm going to start with Councilmember Breckus, if there are any items that you wish to pull for discussion.
I'd like to pull B-1A3, and I'd like to pull B-4.
And may I just ask, is B-1A3 a disclosure, or is that?
I'll be recusing on that.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I wanted to see what we were doing. And then, you said B-4?
Yes.
And that's it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Councilmember Delgado?
Nothing.
Councilmember Jordan? Councilmember Doer? Councilmember Weber? And Madam Mayor, I know that you're home nursing a cold. How are you doing in there, and do you need anything pulled off the agenda?
I'm good. I just, I did want to, I did want to address a public comment, since I'm the liaison on the Housing Authority, because Councilwoman Doer just asked me about this, so I wanted to make sure that we can address it. But anyway, you know, if that, if sarahs in arms is purchased, it would be a private and public partnership. It would also remain affordable housing. No residents will be displaced. I want to make that very clear. The units would also be renovated, since they're in need of updating, and they hope to build more. I understand that Amy from the Housing Authority wanted to have a breakfast to collect updated information to verify that those residents and their incomes have not increased. So, I just want to reiterate, the role of the Housing Authority is to keep people housed and not evicted. So, will you please make sure that the gentleman that came, he's happy, or he's more than welcome to attend our meetings and woman breakfast as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll go back to the B items. Then, we'll start with B-1...
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I have a motion for remainder of consent?
Oh, sure. I apologize.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So, at this time, we will transition to Item B-1A3, as pulled by Councilmember Breckus for disclosure and recusal.
Yes. This is a new license for on-premise beer and wine. The location is 131 Pine Street. It's the most recent addition of the Hub Coffee Roasters, a little coffee shop there. I am going to set aside and recuse myself from this, because the licensee, Mark Tragio, is a personal friend of my husband and I's, he and his wife, and together, the four of us own a building over on Wells Avenue area, where he roasts the coffees that then he sells in his coffee shops. And at the advice of our city attorney's office, I have a personal relationship that is probably best recommended that I not participate in the issuance of this license. So, I'm going to step away from the dais.
And while you're doing that, and when we reset, I'll just say, I've had the privilege of having coffee there at the new location. Fabulous. Congratulations to Mark and the Dropout Bike Shop, I think is what it's called. So, it's very exciting. With that in mind, can I get a motion, Councilmember Delgado?
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilman Delgado, a second by Councilmember, I guess it was Jordan. And so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, next item is B-4, as pulled by Councilmember Breckus. This is approval of fee deferral.
No problem. Give her a second to step back onto the dais. And Mr. Jenkins is coming forward, I think, to see if there's any questions. Councilmember Breckus, three minutes.
Yeah. This is the most recent of the deferrals of the sewer connection fees, and this is for a project on California Avenue that I believe has a special use permit in place. Do you know where that, this project is on that special use permit process?
Thank you.
I'm trying to get the timing situation.
Eric Jensen, Revitalization Manager for the city. I do not know exactly where it is. I believe that the special use permit has been issued, that there's an existing special use permit, and that they are building within the constraints of the existing special use permit.
Okay.
But I will verify that.
Okay. Because, you know, you got, those expire, and then this puts out the connection fees five years from, what period? The time the agreement's executed?
No, not exactly. So, the standard agreement in this process essentially allows deferral of the fees from the time of certificate of occupancy. So, an applicant has 18 months from the time we sign the agreement to start construction. Then, they have a fixed period time that we agree to based on the scope of the project to complete it, and then, once it is completed and they receive certificate of occupancy, then there is a period of time to defer the fees. In this case, they have asked for the full five years. It varies anywhere from zero to five years.
Okay. And this one is zero to five years?
This one is, they've requested five years, yes.
And what about assignments? Because I think the person who came through for the special use permit is not the applicant for this. So, what about reassignments? Is this something that can run with the land?
So, no. The fee deferral is with a specific party. So, it does not run with the land, and so, the applicant must build it and perform. If they, in our standard agreement, if the property is sold, then we can request that the funds be repaid at the time it's sold.
Oh, at the time the project sells. Okay. I'm going to reissue my opposition to this program, and in particular emphasize, because this is the first ones that has come through since we issued $55 million in debt, which is really just a starting point for the expenses that we're going to have to pay to expand that Reno State Plant, that I think the increasing run-up of these deferrals, which lock in for projects, quite a bit of connection fee schedule, is going to make it very difficult for the city council when they are shown ultimately how to pay for all of these expansions that comes with connection fees. I think there's going to be a lot of griping in the community about the inequity of that, that this period of time, some select a few were able to come in and lock, and other projects are going to be shown some... projects are going to be shown some huge connection fee costs. And frankly, I wish we'd already gotten ahead of that, when we have about 15 million square feet of industrial development plan for that sewer plant.
Thank you. Are there any other additional questions or concerns by council? If not, I'll seek a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jarden, a second by Councilman Del, Councilmember Delgado. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. The motion carries six to one, I believe.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, transitioning to your next item, we have no public hearings, therefore we are moving to item D1. This is a presentation and discussion for the ballroom for the CIP for 2020.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and council. You won't have to hear me talk much about this. I'm just going to introduce Rick Murdock, who can bring up his team to talk about this item.
Great, Mr. Murdock, welcome. I make it something that you have a brief presentation that you'd like to make. Mr. Ponie, welcome as well. Madam Clerk, did we have any public comment on this item?
Mr. Vice Mayor, public comment registered for this item is actually Michael Ponie as well as Rick Murdock, and as they are representing the Row at this time, I do not believe that we need to have them give present, public comment. They can just be present to answer questions.
Great, we're ready to go, then.
Thank you. Michael Ponie, I'm behalf of the Downtown Management Company. Since this agreement predates most of the members of the council, I thought it'd be helpful to give a brief history of how it came about. Back in 1999, the legislature approved a new room tax for the purpose of acquiring and constructing tourism facilities in downtown Reno. The purpose of the facilities was to drive midweek room tax or room occupancy, special events, and concerts. The rehabilitation of the bowling stadium and the construction of the Reno Event Center was identified as the first phase of that project, and the construction of the ballroom was identified as the second phase. Initially, the Row properties offered to loan the city $20 million to supplement the financing that was required for these projects. Ultimately, the parties agreed to go back to the legislature in 2001 and impose a special assessment property tax and an additional 1.5% room tax on downtown Reno, in order to round out the required financing for the projects. As the Reno Event Center construction progressed, the city was falling short of the funds necessary to complete the ballroom. So once again, the Row properties stepped up and agreed to donate $4.5 million of land and an additional $3.2 million in cash, in order to provide the city the necessary funding to complete the construction of the ballroom. To provide additional financial assistance, the Row and other downtown resorts went back to the legislature a third time in 2011 and agreed to self-impose a $2 a night surcharge to provide additional funding for capital improvements for the ballroom, bowling stadium, and event center. In consideration of the agreement to put property taxes and additional room taxes onto their properties, as well as the upfront donation of nearly $8 million in land and cash, as well as their aligned interests with the city in driving room occupancy in downtown Reno to support the construction bonds, the city agreed that the Row would operate and manage the ballroom facility, which they agreed to do through an entity called the Downtown Management Company. City and the Downtown Management Company entered into the ballroom agreement in 2005, which was amended in 2011, and that authorized the Downtown Management Company to operate the ballroom for use by the general public and to promote tourism. Under the agreement, the Downtown Management Company is 100% responsible for all operating losses. Net profits are used first to fund an operating subaccount, which is owned and controlled by the city, and any excess profits are split 50/50 between the city and the Downtown Management Company. The agreement requires an annual report of operations, and that's why we're here today. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Rick Murdock, who can get into the operational details and the successes that we achieved in 2019. I would like to highlight, this is the fifth year in a row we have operated at a profit and have generated revenue for the city. Assuming no constraints on our operations, with all of the marketing and entertainment benefits the Caesars merger will bring to the table, we are very bullish on continuing that trend of profitability into the future.
Thank you, council. Appreciate you letting us speak for a few seconds here. I just wanted to go over a few highlights really quick. Last year, six concerts, this year, 2020, seven concerts, and we're not even through the year yet, so we're anticipating. We had approximately 60-something events last year. This year will be over 70 events. And just for the record, the newest ones, Burning Man Network Global Learning Conference, International Association of Golf Tool Operators, National Society of Histotechnology, American College of Veterinary Radiology, and YA Services Symposium. So that's an addition, too, and we've got a lot of nonprofit events, which you all know about, because we do offer it to nonprofits, and we're open for business with anybody that wants to use the facility, just not for the Row's use. We allow anybody that wants to come forward and put an event on to use it. So, that being said, we're very bullish. If you need to know anything about the finances, there's money in the bank this year. We anticipate another profitable year, barring anything else, but we also brought some collateral for the council, if you wanted to see it. This is just, I just took it to the page, so you could see really what the ballroom looks like. That's, that's set for a concert, but we've done a lot of other things in there, whether it's a meeting, all different sites. We can move the stages around, so it's very multi-use. So with that, any questions?
Mr. Murdock, thank you for the presentation. Mr. Ponie, as well. I have a couple of questions. One is, I want to get the details on the Burning Man. I put it on my calendar a long time ago, but I haven't seen any details about it, so I would just like to know more information about it in the event that I want to attend. I know it's like gathering of people in that space to Reno to talk about, you know, Burning Man and all those sort of things. It sounds very exciting, and I have it on my calendar to go, but I hadn't gotten details. Second is, I saw the rollout of the RenoEvents.com website this week, and that is the event center and the bowling stadium, the livestock event center and the convention center, but not the ballroom. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Don, do you want to speak to the website real quick, what we're doing?
Or is Reno Events you all? I'm just trying to figure it out.
For the record, Don Goodman, executive director of sales for the Row. The website itself is under construction right now. It has been, it's RenoConventions.com, if that's the same one that you're actually referring to.
No, I'm talking about RenoEvents.com. I just got an email, I think we all did, earlier in the week about it going live, and the only reason I say that is because it shows event center, the convention center, the bowling stadium, and the livestock event center. But I wanted it also to include you all, if it doesn't. Leonard Skinner, I guess, is coming on March 15th or 14th, and so I was just saying, it might be another opportunity for you to be involved in that marketing, cross-marketing.
I'll do research on that site and make sure that we are on there as the ballroom.
Yeah, makes sense. I just, I looked at, I thought, well, you should be on here, so let's make sure you get on there.
On another note, that the RSCBA has, finally, we've got the ballroom on their website as well, which is really important.
Yeah, I mean, we can't market what we don't, you know, promote, and what other people don't know we have.
And quite honestly, we'll take that, for we should have held the RSCBA a little more accountable for putting on our website, but we've done it. It's good. We're seeing way more numbers, and as Mike mentioned, the Caesars merger, we don't even know what that's going to do, but we've already, they've been up looking at everything, seeing what we can do collectively, and, you know, we've had handcuffs on Reno versus Vegas for a long time with a lot of groups and entertainment. Those handcuffs are off now, so we can funnel anything in Vegas through Reno, which really, I think, as you can see, we've already got seven concerts already booked in that facility, and we're, we're in, we're in March 1st, so we're excited. One point, we are, year over year, if you looked at the numbers, I think 1.627 million is what we did in 19, and we anticipate to be 1.7 million in 2020 when we finish, so barring anything, I think we're, we're looking great. I always come and rattle the cage on the bowlers. Bowlers are going to be 75,000 this year with, with guests here for 110 days, so exciting for us, and I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Yes, Councilmember Jarden, I believe, would like to speak, and then we'll go to Councilmember Brekis.
Thank you, thank you very much. Obviously, your partnership and the Row's partnership in downtown is significant to its revitalization. I am very much looking forward to the Caesars merger and all of the big things that will help in that regard. I appreciate that there'll be more concerts here, and I do have to say that the nonprofit ones, there's a value of community nonprofit events here that just really can't be measured. I mean, in the last, I think, 10 days, you had Kachel's Services there, which were beautiful, by the way. The Go Red Lunch was huge. I mean, it was, the place was packed. But here's the thing, and maybe this is leaning on the RSCBA, why can't, we need that parking of the bowling stadium for these events, which I heard from a number of people going, I had to park way the hell away because the parking garage of the bowling stadium wasn't open. Is that something you guys are going to lean on them to get it open?
Absolutely. We should have had that open. I've already, I talked to them over a month ago. I will follow that up today, council and all the council, and make sure that thing is open, because there's no reason why it's not.
No, and it was, it was tough. I mean, you had a lot of folks that were saying, we're parking so far away, and we don't have any way to get, you know, this beautiful parking garage is just sitting here, and people were struggling where to park. So I appreciate that, thank you. That was just one of those common sense things.
It was open. I parked there.
It wasn't, we, well, the parking garage wasn't open. Maybe you got full, yeah, I don't know. And since with the Caesars merger, I'll put a plug in, Genesis just announced it's, it's going on tour in the UK. Work on that. Work on that.
I really thought the council wanted to see Snoop Dogg. He's coming as well, so.
Thanks.
I will reveal that my child has asked, are we going to see Snoop Dogg? I don't think I'll be there. Councilmember Brekis.
Hi, Mr. Murdock. So the photo this year is, this is the year we buy the chairs?
No.
Oh, I thought, I thought it said the...
I've just shown you the latest collateral.
Oh, geez. Huh? The carpet?
Carpet?
That was the carpet in 2017? Because it says 2021, the 3,000, the 3,030, we're buying the 3,000 chairs this year?
Yes.
That's all new.
Oh, good. Okay, okay.
Why were they uncomfortable?
No, I, well, I haven't been, I don't think I went since they brought those on. I just, I just, you know, every year I look at the Capitol. So when is the term end of the agreements? Was it 15 years? Are we, eight years?
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, do you...
Michael Ponie, the agreement runs for 20 years, starting at the certificate of occupancy for the ballroom, which I think was in 2008, but I'm not certain.
Yeah, that's what I think. So 20 years from 2008 to 2028 is when, so it's too, too soon to start talking about the wind down on it, then.
Or extension.
Yeah. Well, but the other thing is, I think there is some change-up that needs to occur, and I think this came up when I first came on, when you all changed an entity, and if you are changing entities, I think there was an assignability clause that probably required some sort of workout, and maybe at that point, if you are looking internally at it, we could have a conversation, because I think that the support that we provide through to it, you know, could help us with other tasks that we are bringing money for, and would love to have something, you know, a little more property tax generation. In redevelopment A1, we're about to bond out that debt, so I think that if we go through an assignability, even though the term isn't leased, maybe we should have that conversation. I know I'd be willing to have that conversation, because the debt coverage we're having is pretty high on it, and maybe we could just wipe it out.
The agreement hasn't been assigned. It's the same entity that originally entered it in 2005, and like I said, it runs through 2028. We're always happy to speak with the city, but I think we've got some time to go before we get close to that end.
So the Downtown Management Association is still comprised of the three unique entities?
The Downtown Management Company is a limited liability company, and that's the counterparty. It has not changed.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think you're on the phone, and I'd like to get your input if you're available.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just want to say thank you to the Row for really pushing this matter over at the RSCBA. You guys have done a tremendous job in those facilities, and you guys did most of the heavy lifting, so, you know, I want to say thank you. And to the parking situation, it is sort of unclear. I know SMG sort of watches over that, so, you know, that's a conversation to be had with them, but I've, I've seen that, too, where they're blocking off parking, and it really needs to be available. I've heard it multiple times now, so that'll be something I'll put on the agenda over at the RSCBA. So thanks for bringing that up, Councilwoman Jarden.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. One more point, you know, we, we love it. It's a great deal for both entities here, the city and the Row, and I think, because you can see, I know you mentioned a couple of nonprofits, there had to be six or seven, eight nonprofit events. I don't want to list them because it's getting long-winded, but that's really great, and at the end of the day, we cover the losses. So it's, it's a great contract, I think, for everybody, and we see this business getting better and better and better. So we're on an upswing, we're marketing way better, we're starting to deliver what, we put our money where our mouth is, and we're gonna, we're gonna fill that building, trust me. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, and also kudos on the bowlers. I know that because of your hard work, you've really revitalized that relationship. They're excited to come back, and I think we have a significant amount of bowlers that are coming this time around that we haven't seen before. So that's really to your hard work, Rick, and the Row, and I just want to thank you.
And I can safely say, the bowlers are bullish on Reno right now, and I know Mike's been working diligently. You'll see some of the buildings coming down around the bowling stadium that, that do need to come down, and it's going to really make our downtown even nicer than it is. We're so excited about it. And the bowlers will be here on March 20. They're already talking about how do we extend through 2032. We love Reno, so I want to tell the council that, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Mr. Delgado?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you. I just want to express again, like, like the mayor and everyone else, sincere gratitude in terms of all the work that you guys have put in. I know it's a lot different than where we were a few years ago, back when we were looking at, you know, getting some action, and seeing it activated, and you guys have done a great job. Year after year, I've been seeing the, the amount that you guys have put back in, seeing how important it is for us and for all of us to, to make sure that area is activated. And so, great job. Appreciate the, the presentation. Appreciate you guys putting more money into it and making it a Class A opportunity for our, for our community members. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, with that being said, I move to accept staff recommendation.
Okay. Have a motion?
Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor, I apologize. Hold on, I just want to disclose. I want to disclose, Madam Clerk, in the interest of full transparency, I'm disclosing the fact that I have a personal relationship with Jessica Sparazza. She's been retained by the applicant as a consultant on the project. I have sought guidance from our city attorney's office. I do not have any financial or commitment or any ties or obligations to her. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a motion. I didn't recall if I got a second. I have a motion by Councilman Delgado, seconded by Councilmember Jarden. If, in the absence of any further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, next item is D2, Presentation and Update Regarding City Manager Search Process, to be presented by HR Director Mark Gregerson.
Mr. Gregerson, welcome again.
So I've got a PowerPoint, as long as I can figure out how to use it, to go through and kind of update the council in terms of what's happened after our last meeting and last discussion on this, and I've got some additional options for you to consider. So after last week, I contacted the original recruiter that we had talked with you about, and as I kind of thought might happen, he ended up lowering the price for a full recruitment. We had a long discussion about the hybrid model that we had talked about, and a full recruitment, and he was interested in doing a full recruitment. I then contacted another reputable recruiter. It's called CPA, CPS HR Consulting, they're out of Sacramento, and they were interested in both the hybrid as well as a full recruitment approach. The CPS HR consulting options, they were, we, we talked about three options, and there'll be more detail about these options just on a couple of slides from now. First of all, their, their, their first option was outreach only, where they'll help with identifying candidates and getting candidates into the applicant pool, and that's, and that's all that they would do. The next would be a partial recruitment, and I've got a table later on here that'll show what that means. And those were the two hybrid options, where City of Reno resources would work with consulting resources to do the city manager recruitment. And then... And then finally, let me back up. Finally, we discussed a, a full recruitment. And here's the detailed work plan, Phase 1. And you can see on the right-hand side, three columns, outreach, partial, and full. Those correspond to the types of recruitment or the recruitment partnership that we were looking to enable with the hybrid approach. And you can see, these are the steps in Phase 1 of the recruitment for city manager, developing a candidate profile and developing a recruitment strategy. And an X indicates which of those individual tasks would be performed by the consultant. So you can see that if we opted for, if the council opted for outreach only, the consultant would do two things. They would hold stakeholder meetings, and they would develop a candidate profile, where both with the partial as well as the full option, the consultants would coordinate all of those tasks. Phase 2 would be the actual recruitment aspects of the process. And you can then see the individual tasks, place ads, identify and contact potential candidates, review application materials, conduct screening interviews, submit client report, client meetings to select semifinalists, and then notify the candidates. You can see that under outreach, which is the lowest level of involvement of the consultant, the, the, the consulting firm would identify and contact potential candidates only. Whereas under the partial and the full recruitment, consultant would coordinate all of it. Then the third and final phase of the recruitment would be the, what's called the selection process. And the individual steps that are involved in, are to prepare the assessment in terms of how are you going to assess all of the candidates? Schedule the candidates, coordinate travel, prepare evaluation materials, facilitate finalist selection process, conduct reference and background checks, and then assist in negotiations, if requested. And that would be negotiations of the employment contract. And you can see the consultants under the outreach, as well as the partial recruitment option, would not have any involvement in this final Phase 3 of the process, which is the selection part of the process. And they would only be involved if this was, if they were engaged on a, on a, a, a full recruitment basis. So those are the three recruitment options that the consultant talked about. But before we go in and I'll show you the prices of those, I think both recruiters that I spoke with, they emphasized that recruiting in Nevada, I, I have titled it Recruiting in Nevada Realities, but for positions reporting to elected bodies, these consultants who do national searches indicated that, in their minds, Nevada was one of the most difficult states in the nation to recruit, simply because of the sunshine requirements that are included in Nevada revised statutes. And that requires, excuse me, that potentially requires candidates to, for personal as well as professional issues that might surface as a result of them being identified as a candidate. Other recruiting in Nevada realities, candidates must be willing to put their names and their resumes on the public record. And then the recent key staff resignations also add to the challenge that would be faced. The timeline, and this is the CPS HR consultant, they indicated that if they were to do the full search, that using their resources and coordinating everything, that they could complete the search and have a selection of a new city manager within 12 weeks. The precise schedule may vary, depends upon placement of advertising, as well as professional journals and the ability to schedule some of the initial meetings. But they, their timeline indicated that they could go through the selection process with, design the recruitment, recruit, as well as then work with the council to select the candidates, that they could do that in 12 weeks. So here's the price breakdown. And what they've listed under the professional fees is a fixed professional fee as well as reimbursables. And those reimbursables are the design and printing of the brochure, advertising, background checks of one candidate, and other recruitment expenses such as supplies, shipping, and travel. For professional services only, doing the outreach part, and again, the outreach was just in the candidate identification, getting candidates into the pipeline, so to speak. Their cost would be $7,000. If they were to do the professional services, partial recruitment, which was involved with everything, with the exception of Phase 3, which was the selection phase, their professional, professional fees would be $20,000. And if they were to do the full recruitment, their costs would be, or their charge for professional fees as well as fixed expenses would be $30,000. And that $30,000 compares to the $60,000 figure that you were looking at last week. Staff recommendations, staff recommendations remain the same. Our recommendation is to engage a search consultant in order to do the full recruitment. I think it's faster. I think using experienced city manager recruiters in this employment environment, I think is a wise thing to do. And I think it's more efficient. They've done it many times. I've done this probably in my career, probably five to 10 times. But I'm certainly not as experienced as the recruiters, and, and the HR staff members aren't as experienced as the support staff that are available to the recruiters. If a full recruitment is not accepted, I would, staff would recommend that council consider the partial recruitment responsibilities. And I think it's important to talk about this last bullet just a little bit. There's an opportunity cost for using internal resources and doing things internally. And I'll use myself as an example. I've probably got, in this project to date, probably about 20 to 25 hours of my time. And so that's 20 to 25 hours of my time that hasn't been spent in other areas that are also demanding my time. And I think that that's, so that has a cost. It's an opportunity cost. So it's not like comparing $30,000 for a consultant and then thinking that doing it internally was not gonna cost anything, because it will cost something, and it will cost in terms of things that we would normally do that wouldn't get done. So with that, be happy to answer any questions. Encourage the council to discuss in any council direction.
Thank you, Mr. Gregerson, for the presentation. Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. So what, so they went from $60,000 to $30,000?
This was a different consultant.
Okay, okay, thank you. I was gonna say, wow, we've been being overcharged, but, okay, so it's a different consultant.
I'm sorry, this is a, a different consultant. And it's a consultant that is interested in Reno's business.
Oh, good. That's exciting.
I, I've known the firm for a long time. The recruiter is from Las Vegas, and he made a special trip up here in order to talk with me about their services. And as I said, they're interested in doing business, so this is not, I, I would hazard a guess that $30,000 is not a market rate.
I, I, I appreciate that. My question is, on page 6, if we could go back to-
Brian, can I get-
Page 6 of the presentation.
Sure. Brian will queue it up. Oh.
Mr. Vice Mayor, also, while we're turning to that page, the $60,000 is a little misleading. The, the fee was $49,900. I think we put in an extra $10,000 in the last agenda item, just because we expected that we may need to reimburse some of the candidates for travel. So we wanted to represent the true cost, not just the contract cost.
And so $30,000 would not represent any of those travel costs. That would be on top.
Yeah, the candidate travel expenses would be on top of that.
So my question is this. Line 5, is the $30,000 only covers a background check for one candidate? Let me remember quickly.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me, let me pan through that.
Yeah, it said one-
And it's, it's u- I think it was in Phase 3.
Yeah.
It did say, I, I would imagine that's for the selected candidate. But here, here's my, here's my question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Typically, what happens is they'll do a preliminary background and reference check. That's part of the screening process. And that's part of the information that'll be presented on the candle, on the candidates. Then a detailed background check and reference check is typically done at the end of the process, prior to offering the job of the candidate that you'd like to hire.
Okay, and I can understand that, but in light of some recent things, I think the more thorough should be done on the front end, not the back end, because it could inform our ultimate decisions, obviously. My question is, on the, on the issues about interviewing or submitting in Nevada?
Right.
So my understanding is, if applicants submit their resume and they don't meet the minimum qualifications, that those individuals would not be exposed to our process?
That's, that's my understanding, and I would put the city attorney's office on the spot to-
Normally, and we can double-check this, normally, in the past, we'd have recruiters, for instance, and so they would receive the resumes. Or like the city clerk, I remember, if, if the resumes come to us directly, then it becomes public record.
Okay, so, but if we went through a recruiter, they would do, obviously, anybody that met the minimum qualifications and, and made it to us, that obviously would be public. I'm trying to say, if there's somebody who didn't even meet that, they wouldn't need to be outed with their current employer, that they were seeking employment somewhere else, assuming we use a recruiter. Okay, okay. All right, that's my only thing. The, the background check, the more thorough, and then, okay. This is better than what we had last time. Thank you.
Councilmember Jordan, thank you for that. Let me just dovetail on one of the comments there, and that is, we know from the newspaper that recent, in recent days, that background checks have come back to bite public agencies. And we don't want that to happen here. That is for certain. I saw someone comment, if we just Googled X person's name, they would have found these things. So I didn't understand, on the fees and expenses page that you put, what is included, and it says background check for one candidate. Meaning you only background check them when you're down to one person? And I don't understand.
Yeah, let me get to the fees and expenses. Background check for one candidate. So, and I can talk with the, I can talk with the recruiter in more detail and tell him what council is interested in. And I believe that what the case is, is they would do a preliminary background check of the finalists. And that those meet people that meet the minimum qualifications that are gonna be referred to this body for consideration. And to leave the very detailed, very, where they'd actually hire a private investigator in order to go and do the background check for one candidate, just simply because of the expense. And that would be the finalist.
Well, and needless to say, and I'll say this for the public who might inquire, anyone that we hire, I think, you know, I Google people who I meet in the grocery store. I just want to know who I'm dealing with, right? So I, I myself will probably do some of that on my own, and so I thank you for explaining it to me. It makes much more sense now. Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you. I had much the same response, you know, given what we've been reading in the paper. And I think it's really important that in these background checks, that at least the top two or three candidates be background checked, because we don't want to waste our time picking a person, then do the background check, then find out, oh, no, it's not gonna work. Then bring, maybe bring the people back, and they're now second, you know, moved into first because of some glaring issue. So I'd rather know that when we get the top three people, whatever it ends up being, that they have been thoroughly background checked. So, thank you, guys. I, I was gonna speak to the same thing.
And I can certainly notify the recruiter of that, that those are the council's intentions.
And I mean, that includes going on social media, looking at Twitter, looking at Facebook, looking at Instagram, whatever it is required. Looking at legal reports from their town, you know, or their state, to see if they've been, even if, what we read is that there's sort of this statute of going back seven years. I don't think that's sufficient for us. You know, I think we want to go back to several decades, to be honest with you. The second thing I wanted to say is, I am, given the price and the interest of this person and your recommendation about this recruitment group, I'm very interested in moving forward with the recruiter for a couple of reasons. One, and the primary one is one you made, your point you made, which is that this is what they do. And they're, you know, this is their book of business, and they're expert at it. And number two is, I believe you and Sabra are gonna be very busy in the next four months, closing out issues that you've been working on. And I would rather not have all your time taken up with this. I just wouldn't, I would rather you do your work here at work, you know, fixing things that need to be put in place, so that the new manager, the new HR director coming in, you know, have a better world to inherit than, than you did, than neither one, one of you did. So, so I'm interested in moving forward with the recruiter myself, so that's just where I'm standing at this moment.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, just on the subject of the background checks. As someone who went through the process before, I know that, just to give you an idea, I know that I was asked about my social media presence, and if there was anything in my background that happened early on. And then, I think, once I was selected, I gave consent for criminal background check. Also, a financial credit check was also pulled on me. And of course, all was, all of the legal filings. I was asked if there were any lawsuits or anything that I was party to. I believe all of that was pulled, as well as any sort of media about me. So just to give that insight from someone who went through that, I have to say, towards the end, you know, the credit check and everything is, it is a bit intrusive, but, I mean, if you're selected for the job, it's something that you have to do, so.
I appreciate that perspective. Councilmember Brekis.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, I, I think the final vetting as a condition of employment is really the way to go. You know, there's a, there's the screening that gets you through the door, you know, to be in front of us, and I think they're pretty standard in that. But I know, I, I understand the issue people are referring to. Let, let me ask you this. This CPS that, I, I don't know of them. Ralph Anderson's the one we've used in the past, and I think they're the one who, who are doing the risk manager right now. They didn't come down on their price at all, or?
Yeah, they did.
How much did they come down? Are, are they on par?
No, they're not.
Okay.
And I'm trying to think of, things are, I, I, I think they came down to about $45,000.
Okay. I guess I would urge the council, and I don't know this other outfit. I looked them up. They don't seem to have a lot of, like, openings. You know, you know how they, they don't seem to have as much, but, you know, I trust your experience with them. I think it would be a best sign if we went with the one that we've used and have this established relationship, and then used for Ms. Newby, because that recruiter can talk very candidly with this new round of crew, people who come through, from experience, what happened, how they went about otherwise. I think that continuity helps us put the best foot forward. I thought they did a good job before, and obviously, we're using them right now. So I would encourage using them again. Do you have an opinion on that?
Well, I, I was actually looking for Debbie because- because CPSHR, well, first of all, let me talk about CPSHR. They've been around for a long, long time. They've done, they started off in personnel testing. They started to acquire business entities. They acquired a search firm. And they've been in the search firm business under their name CPSHR Consulting for 15 to 20 years. And I know them, they're a reputable firm. And I was looking for Debbie, because we have not, I don't think we've contracted with CPSHR before. Civil service might have. So I don't know where we are in terms of the threshold of that contract. And I'm operating under the assumption that CPSHR is within city managers' contracting authority. If we went with Ralph Anderson, which, for all of your reasons, they've done it before, they know the city of Reno, they know the issues. And that translates into efficiency. I know that they're above the contract terms. So then, it would require, would we have to bring back, at your next meeting, a contract with, for your approval for Ralph Anderson to be the search firm? And I also have, I've worked with Ralph Anderson a long, long time. In fact, I've known principals of Ralph Anderson back to the late 80s that are still involved. And I have no hesitation of recommending them. And they're always my first choice. But CPSHR is also a very good consulting firm that I've worked with occasionally during my career.
Okay, I mean, if I could follow up, or I'll pass it along and it can come back around to me, because I want to follow up on that thought.
I think I'm going to go to Councilmember Jordan, and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you very much. In my prior life of human resources, did use CPSHR. They are a great firm. Always was impressed with what they did. I always like a firm that's eager to get our business to. There's always something appealing about that. I do know that Ralph Anderson, I've kind of heard some grumblings of some things. I don't really have specifics on that. My only thing, you know, with CPSHR is if they would expand their contract, and I kind of feel like if we're going to do it, do it all the way, do the 30,000, tell them to take it all the way across the finish line. But to throw in up to, you know, three thorough background checks. I'd like to have them thoroughly background check the top three before we made a final decision, because it could sway as a consideration point. But my experience with CPSHR was always a very good one.
Madam Mayor, I think you're on the phone and would like to weigh in.
Yeah, a couple of things. I like that, too, having sort of a new company come in, honestly. One of the things that I would like to see, and this kind of goes throughout the organization, but I know we have, it's a little bit different when it comes to civil service and all that. But one of the things that, when we have applicants come, I would like to see all of the applications that come in. The last firm just gave us like the top five. And I mean, I've even seen it, you know, like I said, throughout the city where not the best person gets the job. And actually, we had to go back out. And then that person applied a second time and then finally got the job. But the first time around, they weren't even considered. And a lot of times, you know, those applications come in. So I would like to see every application that comes in and that the council, you know, has the ability to see everyone that has applied. I also would like to encourage internal candidates. If there are, you know, anyone that's interested within the organization, I think they should be highly encouraged. I think, you know, that it's important that we recognize that, you know, there are people in the organization that could do the job as well. So the other question I would have is, let's say it was an internal candidate. Is that something that we would have to pay the recruiter on? Or only for the candidate that they brought forward?
Normally, that's, normally, a full recruitment is just that, it's compensating them for doing the full selection. If they end up hiring an internal candidate that would have otherwise applied, they've still invested the time and the effort into the recruitment process. So they wouldn't, in fact, that's an interesting question, Mayor. I've been doing this for a good number of decades. And I don't think that's ever occurred. That's the first time that question came up. So I'm kind of caught flat-footed here.
Well, I've just seen other boards, you know, there's, it seems like every agency right now is going through a recruitment process. And with that being said, you know, there were internal candidates or there were candidates locally. And that question has come up a couple of times, you know, if those candidates were selected versus someone that on the search firm went out. I can completely understand their time and all the sort of legwork that they have to do to do that. So I get it. But, I mean, and I would also like, I'm sure the council as well, would like to spend as little as possible on this. But at the same time, we often want a great candidate. But I also am confident that people will apply for this job. So I appreciate you. Thanks.
Councilmember Brekis.
Yeah, I mean, I want to continue to, I think Ralph Anderson would be, you know, for the efficiencies mentioned, the best. But pause that, you know. I have the staff report of February 8, 2017. And we received 40 applications before. 10 were lacking the minimum qualifications. I don't think it's worth us to look at 40 applications. I really don't. And then, they did narrow it down, because at the end, we had one, two, three, four, and five came through. So 10 were thrown out, we had 30. They narrowed it down to five. One of them did drop out. And I, that was the person I rated the highest going in. So I remember being disappointed. And I hate for him to have two drop out if you go through an expanded background check that just, they're like, oh, that's going to make, they're going to go talk to too many people in my community and put me at risk. So I just, I think that's a concern. I think our, I think if we were to go and, you know, look at all applications, it becomes a political process, potentially. And I think our go-to is really working with a candidate profile. And that's why I did ask the staff report to come forward with the candidate profile, which Ralph Anderson helped us fill before. And I think we could shortcut the experience, the process if we give yea or nay to that profile candidate sooner than later, like at our next meeting. Because it's such a recent profile candidate. I know we have two new members, but we all sat on board on it. But I think we need to be very clear, because that was a very specific, experienced city manager profile candidate. And, for example, one candidate had 12 years' experience, one had 29. Ms. Newby did not have candidate city manager experience. Another had six, and another had 27. So we went with not what we said. And I'm going to be very upfront about that. And I know it's uncomfortable with her sitting here. But if past practices, we don't want to go with what we said before, then we should work on that candidate profile to make it different. If we want to go, we should stay with the same candidate profile. I think that's a really hard line. And we drew a hard line before. So where do you see that coming in the process? And is there efficiencies using Ralph Anderson and bringing up that old one to have discussion about it again?
Well, I think there's a couple of critical points in any recruitment, particularly executive recruitment. One of the critical points is, what are you looking for? And that happens very early on in the process. And you notice that the CPSHR, when they were doing their search, was it the lowest level of service? Those two, let me go back, Brian. Can I get my? It was right here, it was this one, the outreach only. Notice that the consultant held on to "hold key stakeholder meetings and develop candidate profile." So remember, outreach was $7,000. All they were doing was supplementing the applicant pool. But they retained responsibility for this part of the outreach effort, to have the stakeholder meetings and developing the candidate profile. Question is, why? The answer is, this is absolutely critical. This is what you're looking for. This is going to drive your decision. And the applicant profile is going to potentially affect the composition of your applicant pool. So my thought is, this is a key area that needs to be addressed. And if you're considering a consultant to handle the full scope of responsibilities, I think the consultant should be driving this and be arranging, talking with you, City Council, in terms of what you're looking for in building that profile.
Really upfront?
Yeah, upfront, because it needs to happen, because that drives everything. It's also called a job analysis, in terms of, what are you looking for? What does somebody need to know to be successful in this job? And that, and from that, the whole selection process is designed from that, the recruitment philosophy is designed. For example, if you decide that you're looking for somebody with Nevada experience, that's going to significantly affect the applicant pool.
Okay, well, I'll just, can I just say, I was comfortable with the candidate profile we had before. I can't remember what I ate for dinner last night, but for some reason, I remember 36 months ago that we came up with a candidate profile, we had a good pool. And if we're going to shortcut anything, to me, it's a yea to that candidate profile and try again.
Thank you, Member Brekis. Let me just add the thoughts that I have. Number one, after you've made the presentation earlier today about your HR department and us asking you to do a lot with very little, obviously, it sounds like this body is very inclined to do the full presentation. So I think I'm hearing the body and sensing the development of that thought across the room. And so now, we're just talking about who to do it with. I want to also step back and say, you know, there was this moment last week that came up. And I personally, me as the council member at large, I want to meet with our staff to understand what they want. And so I'm asking you and the manager thereby to put together that opportunity, because I want to understand what they're looking for in that regard. It may not inform ultimately the way you go about creating the candidate profile, but it will certainly go about the way in which I ultimately decide on which person I think is the best fit for the job. And so that's the second point I want to make. And then, lastly, I just suggest that doing the full recruitment with CPSHR is where I find myself. And so, and I don't know how much additional discussion we need to have on this point. And at this point, I'd be looking for a motion, but that's sort of where I am lining up. I'm going to go to Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. You are in the same vein of thought that I am. And I do kind of feel like the, develop the candidate profile and hold key stakeholder meetings, as Councilmember Reese said. I, too, am interested in hearing from the staff and what they want to see. And frankly, 36 months ago, I don't know. I'd have to look and see what we had as the profile then versus, maybe my feelings have kind of changed. And I, too, am in favor of doing the full enchilada with the CPSHR and to have them move forward in a thorough recruitment process.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Dewar. Any further discussion on this item?
Did we want to specify anything about this background check? Because my vision was not going out in the community. Mine was doing a more thorough document check. You know, things that would turn up with reviewing legal documents and so on, so I didn't know.
Well, hopefully, staff has heard us. We expect a very thorough background check. We don't want to be surprised later by any candidate's background that would have been easily located on an easy Google search. And we'll leave it perhaps to that. I agree that that is a key for us. I don't know that the motion maker needs to amend their motion to include that, but appreciate the thoughts on it. Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by please saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, with that, moving on to our next item. We are on G11. This is Appointment to Award to NAB.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to recommend appointing Patrick Fisher, Tyler Langdon, and Steve Schwartz on this round. And then I would like this to come back at the next meeting with these remaining candidates and any other new candidates that come forward in the timeframe.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Jordan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, next item, H11. This is an update from councilmembers on boards and commissions.
Okay, I'm going to start with Councilmember Brekis. Councilmember Brekis, I didn't mean to truncate your ability to speak earlier. I just was trying to keep public comment public. You're obviously a member of our body, which we value very much. And so I just figured that this was the opportunity, perhaps, to chat as it relates to these things.
I'll pass, thank you, though.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Delgado, Councilmember Jordan, Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, I just had a request to our manager. I was, in addition to bringing back the NAB appointment, I was wondering if you could re-agendize at the next meeting the tenants' board for the applicants that have, are remaining. I've asked several people to apply. And so I don't know if they did or didn't, but I'm ready to make my appointment. And I would also like to bring back the charter committee appointments, because I have one appointment there. And I think I'm ready to make that appointment. I think they've applied, so.
Yes, I will work with Madam Clerk.
Yeah.
Yes, just to clarify for the record, charter committee appointments actually do not need to be done at the Reno City Council meeting per cent to the language and charter. So that could be something that I'll just check with you and communicate with you and we'll move forward.
Well, fine, that's excellent.
But we will bring back the other two boards per your recommendation.
Madam Clerk, before we move on from that, can you tell us what the status is of the tenant board? And the reason why I ask, I think Councilmember Brekis and I were just both wondering, when's it coming? Is it on the offing?
I can defer, yeah, I can send that to the city manager as they oversee the boards. Yes, they have had one meeting, and their first meeting. And at that meeting, I believe they, I'm looking on my computer now, they decided to meet monthly. And I believe that they are meeting, please hold. I want to say it was, was it the last Thursday at 3:00? I want to say.
If you would just get back to us and let us know, Madam Manager. I think when the first meeting happened, I was unaware that it was happening, which is, happens in a big city and we have lots of things going on. I would have liked to have attended the first one, but missed it. And so I'll try to catch the second one.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I have it as the fourth Tuesday of every month at 3:00 PM.
Here?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Weber, can I come back to you? Okay, and I have nothing. Madam Mayor, are you with us still?
I am.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you so much.
With that.
Ashley, or Madam Clerk, back to you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning. We have no 6:00 PM hearings tonight. No general public comment is signed in with me.